With that, I'd like to call to order the council meeting of July 10th. And the clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Haas.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum. Councilmember Spatafor is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
At this time, I think all of our hearts and souls go out to the family of Winter Cole Smith and the tragedy that happened with that family. And we pray for their comfort and healing, and it's going to take a long time. As a community, if we can just wrap our arms around the family and friends of Winter, it would be much appreciated. Is there anyone else that has any comments this evening? Seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where winter stands, one nation under your power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of May 22nd, June 12th, and June 26th.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes of the May 22nd and June 12th meeting as written.
You have a motion on May 22nd and June 12th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes of June 26th, 2023, as presented.
All right, we have the motion for the June 26th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple things. The first thing I wanted to announce and congratulate is Mark Dotson, who used to be city attorney here. His son was appointed to the 61st District Court by Governor Granholm. Oops, sorry.[196.26][196.26](Laughter) I just aged myself, oh my gosh. By Governor Whitmer. Sorry, Governor. Mr. Dotson had previously served as an attorney in the Kent County Office of Public Defender and adjunct professor at Western Michigan University Thomas Cooley Law School. Following the murder of George Floyd, Mr. Dotson undertook the role of managing attorney with the Hennepin County Public Defender's Office in Minneapolis for a two-year period for returning to Grand Rapids. So he is now serving as a judge in the 61st District Court, City of Grand Rapids. So we want to extend congratulations to Mr. Dotson for that. The second thing I'd like to do is welcome and introduce our group in the audience. We have two groups. We have, the first group is the Study of U.S. Institutes, S-U-S-I, for European Leaders. Would you guys like to stand and say, and just be recognized? We have those folks with us?[261.02][261.02](Applause). Welcome. And then we have the Mandela Washington Fellowship Program, professional fellows from Africa who have been in Lansing for six weeks, and they've been working with various city departments. Would you like to stand and be recognized as well?[281.22][281.22](Applause). So, welcome, welcome everybody, welcome to our city council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Are there other councilmember comments? Councilmember Brown.
I just want to take a moment to wish my father, Vietnam veteran, Lansing local, Richard Gaylor Brown, a happy 78th birthday.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.[309.14][309.14](Applause).
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, just a few things. First, the next SWAG or Southwest Action Group monthly meeting is actually tomorrow. Typically, it's the first Tuesday, but because of the July 4th holiday, we did delay it by a week. So the next Southwest Action Group meeting is tomorrow, July 11th at 6:00 PM. This is at 2101 West Homes. If you don't know, there are some exciting, exciting things that this group is working on at this time. We will have special guest Roxanne Case with the Land Bank, as well as Mikey Austin with 517 R-Space to talk about initiatives that are ongoing right now, not only in southwest Lansing, but across south Lansing. So highly encourage folks to be there to listen to those updates. We will also have updates on the Pleasant Grove School redevelopment project, as well as the reactivation of 3700 South Waverly. And of course, that's in addition to myriad other things that this particular group is either working on or working hard to support. I also want to thank Jordan Hankwitz and Nicholas Matri, respectively. These are the director and the executive director, deputy director, I should say, of economic development and planning, and these are fairly new appointments. I was able to spend a couple hours with these gentlemen about two weeks ago, and we spent some time kind of traversing the corridors throughout southwest Lansing. We have done a ton of great work, and you think of South MLK, you think of South Waverly, think of Pleasant Grove and Homes. But frankly, there are some properties, and kind of the word of the night, I've used this word a lot, but I think it's appropriate here. There are some critical properties that are really chipping away kind of at the livability of southwest Lansing, and I think the economic viability of our corridors and commercial districts. So in any event, these two gentlemen and myself were able to spend some time out in the corridors, and I think it was, I think it was helpful for them to actually be able to put eyes on these properties, to actually be able to experience some of the issues with these properties. It's a lot different. As a matter of fact, Jordan Hankwitz, at one point said, man, it's a lot different when you're actually out here, as opposed to looking at emails. So conversations since that time have been great. I think what we have are a couple leaders within that department that are taking things incredibly seriously, and I think to, you know, that bodes well. I think when folks are new in their positions and they're incredibly, you know, we talk about their plate, it's overfilled, but for them to provide that kind of time out in the field, I was incredibly impressed, I want to thank them. And then I'm hoping as part of our mayoral comments tonight, we can hear a little bit about the SimTop settlement. As part of that settlement, they had 30 days. So obviously, the settlement encompassed all 21 properties, and when you look at inspection reports, fire safety reports and the like, they had, I think it was 30 days, to pull permits for any permitted work that needed to occur, and that deadline was actually yesterday. So I'm hoping that we have been, you know, there's been some oversight, and we know whether or not those have been pulled, and if not, where do we go from here? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Nothing on that end? Okay.
Thank you, President Wood. I just will announce that we do continue to issue absent voter ballots for the upcoming August 8th city primary election, and we've issued over 10,000, so those have been mailed to people's address where they want it, but there's still plenty of time. And I want to highlight that we have had people asking about information about the candidates. I know candidates are generally responsible for putting out their own information, but there is a nonprofit, or I'm sorry, a nonpartisan resource put out by the League of Women Voters, and that gives the candidates the opportunity to answer questions in their own words. So you can go to vote411.org, put in your address, and you can find your way to get information on the candidates from an independent source. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to give us the details of your event.
Might need about a minute and a half, because I've got two back-to-back. On Friday this week, beginning at 9 o'clock in Mount Hope Cemetery in Section T, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will begin to dig up, resurrect, and repair and replace three monuments of children who were born in the 1800s and died before the age of five and are in that Section T Jewish area of Mount Hope Cemetery, all who could have been sons in progress of Beck family but were taken by death at an early age. So if you're interested at all, we'll be there until we're done, and whatever time that is, you're welcome to stop by and watch us work. And then on Sunday at 11 o'clock in the Fratcher Memorial Garden at Mount Hope Cemetery, we're having our third annual picnic, open to the public picnic in the cemetery. We'll provide subs, chips, cookies, bottled waters, cans of pop, or you can bring your own picnic lunch with you. If you want to bring a blanket or a chair, that might be advisable. If you want to bring your puppies, as long as you keep them on a leash and clean up, you're welcome to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other community events?
Hello, Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. We will be holding our second annual backpack giveaway in partnership with LaughQ. Date to be determined, but it will be a Saturday in mid to late August. Couple ways that we'd like to ask for support, if you'd like to get involved. We will be doing a backpack, school supplies, and personal hygiene, preferably like the little mini sizes, drive throughout the month of July and all the way up to the week before the event. We do that with support from Two Men and a Truck. They'll provide us some nice big boxes to use. Every single LaughQ branch location in the Lansing area will be a drop-off site. If you have a company organization place that gets a lot of high-traffic areas, you can also be a drop-off site. The other ways that you can be involved is you can do a drive in your office. So if you have a good department, or your entire floor, or your organization, your group, you can also just do a drive, meaning just collect backpacks, school supplies, personal hygiene products. If you want to just directly support, you can do so by purchasing a backpack, some school supplies, or personal hygiene products. That is the preferred way, but if you want to just give, I prefer the actual products because that's easier, we don't have to shop, but if you want to donate, we will not turn those donations down either. You can email us at thevillagelancing@gmail.com, or me directly at erica.lynn@thevillagelansing.org if you are interested, or if you think of any other way that you would like to be involved, or you know someone that might want to come onsite and be involved. I just reached out to the library to see if they'll bring the bookmobile. We will also be giving away clothes, shoes, and period products from Helping Women Period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Mike Lynn, America's Twin of Life, you guys eventually are going to put some respect on our name. I heard you saying that the League of Women Voters is doing something. What about us? We've been doing the candidate conversation now for three years. Give us a little respect. Anyways, this Thursday, July 13, 7:00 PM, we will have Adam Hussein, third ward candidate and incumbent, who will be on the show from 7:00 until 8:00, to have a just in-depth conversation about his candidacy and what's going on with that. And if anybody here is looking to, you can go to America's Twin of Life on Facebook, and you can see all the candidate conversations of this year. I believe we had seven up to this point, really candid conversations with people for an hour long, and we get in-depth with all of what's going on. And then we will conclude everything August 7th with a town hall-style candidate conversation at 7:00 PM, and it'll be at the Fledge. And that'll be, we will give them time to speak their own platform, and then after that, take their questions from the audience. So August 7th, 7:00 PM, we'll conclude our 2023 candidate conversation with a town hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I see no other community events. We are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. We do have two show cause hearings, so if you, I believe both of the people who received those notices have signed in for the show cause hearings. And then we have public comment on legislative matters, which includes agenda items four through 14. Again, four through 14, that's the blue form. If you could jump up right now and sign in with grace if you wish to speak during either of those periods. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Thank you. Just real quick, on behalf of the mayor, he apologizes he won't be able to be here tonight, he is receiving a grant on behalf of the city. Once we have all of those details, I'm sure you guys will have the resolution to receive those funds, so really excited about that grant. And secondly, I don't have a SimTop update prepared, but I'll certainly get one and email all of council within the next 24 hours or so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freyer, I realize you're not the mayor. I realize that you're going to be sitting in the hot seat, but I'm asking you to please notify the mayor and his campaign information that he needs to stop sending emails to city accounts soliciting funds and promoting candidates. I have had this conversation with him before over other candidates that did this. It is, it might not be illegal, but it's definitely improper. And so if we could, opening up my email to see that email today was very distressing, and then to see the fact that it was also soliciting funds, not knowing how many other city employees received those as well, and we need to see if we can do something with IT to block those types of emails coming through our system. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are to the show cause hearings. We have two show cause hearings, a business, both business licenses appeals for transient merchant licenses. One is for DeAndre Thomas, the other is for Eugenio Trujillo.
If we could have the, before we called those up, if we could have the city attorney's office explain these two hearings, or whether Lisa's going to do that? And the reason I'm asking for this is this is the first time since I've been on council that we have had a show cause hearing for a denial of a transient license. So Lisa, if you could go over that with us, please.
Sure. The city ordinance requires that a license be obtained for a transient merchant. As part of that license application, there is an evaluation done by various city departments, including Treasury and the Lansing Police Department. In this case, in these two cases, the license applications were denied on the basis of information obtained by the Lansing Police Department, and these appellants have come before you to ask that you reverse that denial. So the way the ordinance works and what it requires is that a hearing be set, that's what's happening today. My understanding of the procedure is then it will go back to committee, where additional conversation can be had between the applicant, as well as the specific officer who did that analysis and made that recommendation for denial, and then the city council is the body that makes the final determination as to whether to issue a license or not.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no idea what a transient merchant is, so could you please explain it?
My understanding is a food truck, or sort of a moving merchant goods, that kind of stuff, but the food truck is what we see most often.
Councilmember Jackson.
Well, I guess, what was the person trying to sell, and what were the reasons for their denial? There's two of them.
Sure. I am not the individual that made the determination, right? Again, that was the Lansing Police Department, and I believe that is what's going to take place when this gets referred back to city operations, is that officer will come before the committee and give a number of reasons. It is my understanding from reviewing the materials that both of these are essentially food truck or catering type of operations, and that they both were denied for reasons found in their background checks specifically as related to criminal history. Or a mischaracterization of facts in their application.
I think Councilmember Hussein, since he sits on the committee, can, might be able to say.
Yeah, and just to be specific, so I'm not the chair of this particular committee, but I do have the report. And so Mr. Thomas, obviously, this is number two, and deals with the, this is actually a barbecue business. In any event, he was denied a transient merchant's license for that business due to criminal history and certain omissions on his application. We did have Mr. Thomas into committee, stated he did not list certain misdemeanors on his application because he didn't think they rose to the level of the felonies that he did disclose. LPD at the time, they were supposed to be on hand, I believe that there was a call that they needed to respond to, so they were not on hand. But we did, I should say, we have had some communication with the LPD since, and we learned that the LPD recommended denial for a few reasons. Number one, extensive criminal history. Two, lack of disclosure. Four, separate incidents where Mr. Thomas guilty to charges ranging from possession to resisting and obstructing an officer, the latter which occurred in 2021. And then third, inaccurate disclosures. And an example given was a possession charge where Mr. Thomas referenced marijuana as a substance, but LPD actually reached out to the 10th Circuit Court and learned that the substance was not marijuana, but rather another substance. And then the second case with Mr. Eugenio Trujillo, again, he was denied a transient merchant license, this would be for Cuban cuisine. He was not present the day of the committee hearing, as he was actually arrested that day on an outstanding war out of Detroit. However, we in committee, in order to begin the process, we did move forward with the setting of a public hearing. We learned that Mr. Trujillo was actually released on a PR bond the following day and was sent notice of the public hearing tonight. With regard to the initial denial, the LPD noted dishonesty in the application and the history of violating both civil and criminal laws. Specifically, Mr. Trujillo stated on his application that he had never been convicted of any crime, but the criminal background check found that dating back to 1998 and spanning through 2023, Mr. Trujillo had some 14 separate incidents that dealt with civil and criminal violations. So again, inaccuracy in essentially the application, certain omissions, things of that nature.
And just so we understand, we're not trying this here, we're having a public hearing so that the individuals can make a statement, then this will go back to the city operations to make a determination and come back to council. Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I understand, and I see that people aren't here, but a couple things. So a person who has convictions, especially felonies, they can't get a lot of normal jobs. So we want them to come back and be productive, and they have to start their own business a lot of times. A lot of people do landscaping and handyman work because that's all they can do. So I understand for both of these, background and honesty is an issue, but it's funny because the person who was honest, more honest, disclosed felonies, which a lot of places are discluded, but the person who didn't disclose anything probably didn't want to get his record brought into this, so he loses too. I don't think that someone's background necessarily would preclude them from being a good candidate for their business. I think we should look more at the business aspect of it, or what they're going to bring or not bring.
And Councilmember Jackson, again, this is just the public hearing, and you're more than welcome to show up to the city operations when they have this for them again, and then you'll have an opportunity when it comes out on the floor for a decision. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, just in order to have, I think, a fair and balanced public hearing, it should be noted that when Mr. Thomas came to committee, he did reference the fact that he was able to prove that he's been gainfully employed with UPS, and he also provided a couple character letters from notable individuals throughout the community.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will now start our hearing process.
Okay, first, we have DeAndre Thomas, followed by Eugenio Trujillo.
Mr. Thomas, and you will have three minutes to address the council, and then again, this will go back to city operations, and you'll be able to state your case at that time. Thank you, Ms. Haggen, for your explanation. Mr. Thomas.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for having me today, and I want to speak on that. But prior, like I said, I admitted to the convictions on the sheet, but I didn't know about, when I pled guilty, they said the other charge was threw out, so why would I, I didn't know I had to put that in the document as well. Like, because once you plead, they say they threw the other case out, but it's still coming up in the background, so why did I plead guilty to get that threw out if it still comes up? And I admitted to the felony, thinking the other one is threw out, but it still came up, you know, and that's denying me my license, which I don't think is fair. And I've been cooking since 2001, and I obtained my certificate in 2012, which I have right here. I've been cooking since then. I officially opened my business in 2015 in Saginaw, Michigan, just as a DBA, doing festivals, carnivals, car shows, small stuff like that. And since I moved here to Lansing, I officially made it an LLC, just the beginning of this year, to open up, to go outside and be in a parking lot with my truck, my business, which is not mobile, even though it's a truck. I have to put my truck in a specific location, I can't move it anywhere, I have to sit still, you know, so I kind of don't understand that aspect of it either, why have a mobile vehicle that has to sit in one specific location, and it could move, you know? But far as that, like I say, I've been cooking since 2001, you know? Business is LLC, I have an account for my business. Like I said, I've been trying since March of this year to get this up and going, and I'm still waiting, like I said, I'm cooking, my cook season is almost over with, you know? I'm going to have to wait till next year to start, you know, and I'm working at UPS, I only work there part-time. This is going to be my business time for I can make money for myself, you know, because I only work part-time right now, because I have four children, so I can't work a full-time job like that, and my fiance is working too, so I'm trying to do something to take some of the burden off of her too as well. You know, she's at work right now, working 12 hours, she shouldn't have to work like that with four kids at home, you know? So that's my story, you know? Like I say, I've been certified through the state for years doing this. Like I said, I had character letters from people throughout this city at the last meeting. I gave you guys a copy of my menu of the food I sell, and I've been upfront about everything. Like I say, I didn't know, me pleading, when they tell you in a court, you plead guilty to this case, this one get throws out, but now I'm seeing that is not the case. So I would have disclosed all that information if I knew that at the time, you know, stuff like that, that you don't know, you know? They tell you one thing, and it's another, and those things happened in 2000, early 2000, '98. So why is that still holding me up 20 years later?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And the committee will be taking this up on July 24th at 3:30, so you'll have an opportunity to come back then, and then we'll have action that night.
On July?
July 24th.
I'm going to get an email notification, I just need to remember that.
Pardon?
I'm going to get an email notification, I just need to remember.
We'll make sure that staff gets in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Next, we have Eugenio Trujillo.
Hi, how are you? I want to say, first of all, thanks to the city council for letting me come here. My thing is, listen, I'll be honest, I went to the, I own the firearm in the state of Florida. I took my firearm to the airport, it was my mistake, okay, and that's what I got arrested for. I hired a lawyer in Detroit, his name was Maurice Davis, okay? I had a settlement which I brought here on that day. So I had a settlement from Wayne County, I thought that was closed. The day I got arrested, while I couldn't come here, I got arrested right downstairs in that first floor. I walked in here through a metal detector, okay, I walked up to the officer that denied me, I shook his hand, and he told me I need two minutes to talk. He pulled me over to the side, and he arrested me right there. I never knew that I had a bench wire. I've been in business for over 15 years in three different states. I don't have one complaint against me or my business. I've been in Lansing here for four and a half years off of 2200 South Cedar Street. That location right there, since I got that location, all I've done is work, work, work on it, okay, to make it nice and inviting, okay? And I just don't understand, because I closed my business today, I went to work, this means a lot to me because that truck is named there, in Montreal, after my mother that passed away. I got that truck certified through the state, my truck is approved, I went for a transient license, I understand that the transient license, because it's not a building, it's not a permanent thing, but I'm putting that on my location, that 2200, I'm not looking to move it, and I just don't, I just don't understand why most of my arrests were over eight years ago, and they were misdemeanors, okay? I have the paper here, I brought that day here, the settlement from Wayne County, and I've been upfront, I must have walked inside this building on more than seven to 10 occasions trying to make this right. I've been extremely I've been extremely upfront the whole way. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm a businessman, I'm a working man. I work 14 hours a day. And I just, you know, I just don't think it's right. I'll be totally honest with you, you know? So, my arrest here, honestly, I've been in communication with that officer. He had my phone number. I told him when he arrested me, I go, why wouldn't you at least have, you know, let me know I had a warrant? Because for me to come in here, in here and get arrested on that lobby, how does that look? Okay? That looks, that's why I wasn't able to be here. But you know what? I came here and I'm holding my head up. That's all I could do. And, you know, I'll put it in your hands, but, so at least I have the opportunity to come in front of you.
Thank, thank you, sir. And as I stated to Mr. Thomas, the city, this will go back to city operations. They'll be meeting on the 24th at 3:30. And you'll have an opportunity to sit down with the committee to go into more in-depth than the three minutes that you have. And there will be the officers that have made the determination that will be there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, on the referral of the show cons hearings, items two and three.
Both back to city operations.
All right, public comment on legislative matters. Again, that's items four through 14 on the agenda. Item four, five and six are public hearings. Four is a special assessment for snow and ice removal. Five is a noise special permit for the CSO 15 South project. And item six is an ordinance regarding the placing of placarded equipment and structure.
And before we move into that section, are we moving the appointment?
Do you want to pull that up?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. Not a problem.
All right. Before that, let's move forward to item number 11, the appointment of Ben Corman to the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the appointment of Ben Corman as an at-large member of the EOCC for a term to expire of October 1st, 2029.
I have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Sir, if you could come down inside the well, the clerk will swear you in at this time. And then we will move on to the public hearings and legislative comments.
All right, if you could raise your right hand and repeat that for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Elected Officers Compensation Commission Member.
Elected Officers Compensation Commission Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. You're a gentleman.
Thank you. Thanks for moving it up. Thank you, Eugenio.
Not a problem. With this, we'll go to the public hearings. The first one is the special assessment on snow and ice. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, this is an annual exercise, essentially property owners here in the city of Lansing are fined for snow removal win after 48 hours from the end of a snow event. And after notification of a snow violation or potential abatement, that abatement has not occurred in the city of Lansing, has to actually contract for services to remove that. In any event, the process does include a public hearing, which is what we're having tonight. Individuals that are being assessed for abatement can appeal both in person as part of the public hearing or in writing. This year's role includes, I think, 24 different assessments, totally $6,620, I'm sorry, $6,726. And these costs were incurred between December 1st, 2022, and April 30th, 2023. The second is a noise special permit for Levitt and Stark Excavating to connect, to conduct work as part of the CSO 15 South project. This is actually a project that is a partnership between Public Services and Lansing Border Water and Light. It's a CSO project. The project generally is bounded by Lapeer Street to the north, Sycamore to the east, Ottawa to the south of Berlindon to the west. We did have Mr. Melvidas in from Public Services to committee and he said that the project is extensive. It will cover the vast majority of the next three construction seasons. Does fall under the consent order that we have within, or I should say, with the state. And within that consent order, there's a timeline that must be adhered to. And so their concern obviously is rain dates and other unforeseen issues. And so they want to have some flexibility to actually do some Saturday work from 8:00 to 4:30 to meet the timelines that are within that consent order with the state. It was made crystal clear that because this noise waiver is for 8:00 AM, that we on council are expecting that they don't even start up their equipment until 8:00 AM. And that is not just the work piece. And then lastly, there is a, an amendment to Chapter 1460 that clarifies the parties responsible for prohibiting the occupancy and maintaining the vacancy of placarded equipment and structures. This amendment really does a couple of things. Number one enhances the tools and laws toolbox to make sure that we can actually enforce against property owners that are allowing for habitation in placarded properties. And then it very clearly outlines the fact that when we look at placarded properties, red-tagged properties, and there's work done after that 8:00 to 5:00 during the business week, that that, that allowance, that, that permission is actually given in writing.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Clerk, I think we have some communications that have come in.
We do. I want to call the first speaker, David Lackey, because I know he needs a moment to make his way to the front. And while he's making his way, we have communication from Sylvia Beasley appealing a snow and ice assessment. And we have a number of communications on the noise waiver. We have from Heidi Frye with concerns about the waiver. We have from MC and Tamiko Rothhorn supporting the waiver. We have from Kimberly Fawson, apparently either with concerns or in opposition to the waiver, at least as it is presented. And a letter from Debra Mulcahy and Peter Olila opposed to the waiver. And those will be made part of the record. And so then we have Mr. Lackey followed by Sheila Contreras.
My name is David Lackey. I reside in the city of Lansing. I appreciate the councils giving me the ability to be here. My situation is that I'm here to seek an abatement for, or an appeal for the fee for some removal of some items on, from my property on Culver Street. I'm currently on social security disability and only get about $1,000 a month to pay my house payment and utilities and everything else. And the amount that I was charged is $1,630 and I can't really afford it to pay that. So I was looking to see if there is a possibility to either complete abatement or at least partial abatement of that fee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheila Contreras followed by Heidi Frye.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sheila Contreras. I have lived on Genuson Avenue since the turn of the century and I have seen a lot from my spot there at the flashing light. So, I think we have to consider the noise ordinance and the special permit, the special permanent permit in the context of the structural and other changes going on in the West Side neighborhood of Lansing, our tree city. Sorry, my notes are a little all over the place. So, the noise from that construction site is constant five days a week. I walk my dog by there. I used to walk by it when it was a grassy field. I understand it's public property or private property and that people can do what they want on their private property, but not when it affects community, public health or public health more generally. So, this construction site is next to a daycare. It is also next to a city park. This noise, the gravel trucks, the bang-banging all day long, five days a week, next to where developing children are sleeping, are eating, are playing, and are trying to learn. Recently, some research has come out about the effects of noise on community, public health, on public health. I'd be happy to provide those citations for y'all, but the research is out there. The idea that there would be an additional day of this activity when many of us in the neighborhood are fundamentally opposed to the presence of that construction site just is alarming, quite frankly. It's made a difference in our neighborhood. And I also think, this is supposed to be my first point, that that has to be, well, I said that in the constellation of the other things that are happening. The, our traffic light possibly being taken away, for example, just other changes going on in the neighborhood. So, I think also the question remains as to whether this kind of activity is actually permissible, legal, or if it is not perhaps in violation of state and federal environmental regulations. Can you really put that kind of activity next to a place where small children congregate? I just don't understand really how the city can keep allowing these things to happen. And I guess the last thing I wanted to say is, oh yes, the other argument I've heard, we've heard repeatedly, is that this is, you know, the site itself is on the basis of a temporary permit and that, what is it, three to five years or something? Three to five years is a long time in the life of a child. And so, my point is, this is happening next to a place where small children congregate, where small children are supposed to be continuing their development and being educated. And it's also occurring next to one of our city parks. So, I oppose the, whatever is being asked for, the relief request, whatever it is. And I oppose the presence of that construction site in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Frye.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to talk about the noise waiver for the CSO project. And I do want to state that I myself and many residents are not against the CSO project. This is a project that's much needed for the protection of water quality in the city and in the river in general. What I do want to state is that the communication that was received is really lacking in detail. I, I understand the need to accommodate and speculate about unforeseen circumstances that could arise, but it's really hard to evaluate this proposal without understanding the duration and how this will impact the quality of life of residents. So, for example, if this proposal could shorten the proposed work time by a couple of months, I think perhaps some people could understand the necessity for that. But we're left with no information to really evaluate, is this worth the diminishment of the quality of life? So, what we do know is that there's potential to have work between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. For those of us who work from home, and especially those of us with small children, that can be very disruptive. It can also create an unsafe environment to, for children to be around those workspaces. To add to that additionally, the potential to have Saturdays from 8:00 to 4:30 is really a diminishment in the quality of life for residents that are going to be living with this already for five days a week. I do want to, again, stress that no one is opposed to the project. We would just really like to see some accommodation for residents that are going to have to live through this for what sounds like up to three years. The last thing I did want to touch on is the communication for this project has really left a lot to be desired. I do want to add that several neighbors that are directly, that will be directly impacted by this project did not receive notifications. That occurred last year as well, when the issue of removing some of the island parks arose. A lot of neighbors did not receive the postcard. And, and finally, to remedy that, I would like to extend the invitation to planners and those involved in the project to submit details to the West Side Neighborhood Newsletter. It's a great way to reach people and make sure that people can be involved in this process so that people do have a voice in this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearings, number four, the special assessment.
We'll go back to city operations.
Noise special permit.
And that will go back to city operations. And I might ask the vice chair, Councilmember Hussein, if this is taken up on the 24th. One of the things we did receive, different communications saying that neighbors were not notified. If you could ask Public Service to provide you with a list of who those went out to, that would be appreciated.
And item six, the amendment to Chapter 1460.
And that will go back to public safety.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
All right, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So, I move the following items under the consent agenda. First, we have the Tri-County Office on Aging Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Implementation Plan. Next, we have the grant acceptance, the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, that's the Home ARP for Homelessness Prevention Program, HPP. Next, we have the grant acceptance, Home ARP Funds awarded by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for Housing Navigation Program, HNP. And lastly, we have the grant acceptance for Michigan State Housing Development Authority Shelter Diversion Pilot.
Okay, we have a motion before us. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, resolutions for action. And we are, I understand, item number 12 has not been reported from committee, so we're to item 13, the claim appeal.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, this claim appeal pertains to the property at 2033 Culver Avenue. We did hear from the property owner earlier, Mr. David Lackey, and the amount being contested is $1,630. From the staff report, very quickly, the property was cited for multiple premise violations on December 12th of 2022 with compliance date of 12/19/2022. The officer rechecked the property after the holidays on January 6th of this year and all violations were still present. The contractor arrived on January 27th, about a month and a half after the initial notice to abate the violations that remained. There was a complaint about lawn damage. If you guys looked at the claimant form, however, the contractor did have to drive through the yard as the bulk of the violations were at the rear of the property. The claimant was not present in committee on June 26th. However, as part of that claim form, Mr. Lackey did not deny the violations, nor did he challenge the abatement. However, he did take exception to the cost and then referenced his ability to, to pay, which was obviously touched upon again tonight by Mr. Lackey. I would, as always, remind council members that the cost is contracted amount that the city incurs from our contractor and then obviously you have the 265 that's, that's tacked on. We in committee did recommend full denial of this claim. And so with that being said, I would move forth the resolution.
You have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? The only thing I would ask is, did you inform the claimant that he could work with the treasurer's office about making payments?
No, because he was not present, but he just did. So, we appreciate it.
Okay, so that is something that is available to him. So, with that, we have a motion for us. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, and we have a grant acceptance, this is item 14.
I would like to pass the gavel.
Okay, so we have a grant acceptance, Party Health and National Fitness Campaign Grant for the City of Lansing Parks and Recreation Department. So, with that.
Thank you, sir. What we have before us is a grant in the amount of $40,000. The city would be responsible for $140,000. The grant money, the grant match would come out of the Parks Grant Match Fund. This is an outdoor fitness equipment to be installed at. This is an outdoor fitness equipment to be installed at Washington Park. It's similar to the one that we have downtown at Rotary Park and the one that is out at McGuire Park. So this will give us another location midway between in the city to, for this. So the cost of the 140, there is $30,000, which would be a concrete pad that the city would put down for the equipment. So with that, I would move the resolution.
With that, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet. And if you haven't had an opportunity to sign in, please jump up and grab grace to get a form in the next 30 seconds or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Okay, I move that all items be considered as being read and full, and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
Have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Please don't file.
Tri-County Office on Aging Annual Implementation Plan.
Committee of the whole and placed on file.
The appointment from the mayor, we have the appointment of Heath Lowry to the Board of Public Service.
City Operations.
Workers' Compensation Settlement.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Two items relative to the amendment to chapter 273, the role of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
Those are going to be referred back to the city attorney's office.
We have two items relative to the amendment to chapter 240, the role of the Human Relations and Community Services Office.
Those would be referred back to the city attorney's office.
We have two items relative to an amendment to chapter 273 repealing section 273.06.
And those will be referred back to the city attorney's office.
And two items relative to the amendment to chapter 273 to repeal 273.08.
Those will be referred back to the city attorney's office.
And establishing the Red Cedar South Frandor Social District.
That will be city operations.
Item from President Wood, communication from Kathy Kraft regarding the Cooley Hayes House.
Committee of the whole.
Communications and petitions and affidavit of disclosure from Jeffrey Brown, city council member.
To the Ethics Board.
Claim appeal for claim number 1963 for $493 in board-up fees at 1017 West Hillsdale.
The city operations.
And the claim appeal for claim number 1972 for $640 in trash fees at 810 McKinley Street.
And that to city operations.
And claim appeal for claim number 1941, $810 in board-up fees for 3700 Waverly Road.
That will go back to the administration. There is nothing in Laserfish or the packet showing any of the claim photos or reports.
Communication from Mitch Rice regarding council member Brown's ethics violation.
Committee of the whole.
And motion of excuse absence.
Vice President Garza.
Okay, I make a motion to move, to excuse Councilman Spatterford.
Have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to remarks by council members.
Are there any council members? Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't be here on July 24th. And so I wanted to just make a comment right now. I would urge the council to really look at the transient license appeals. I think that I understand the decision by the police in that they were following priorities, so it's nothing against the police department. But I think we need to look at two individuals that are really trying to make a living and be productive. And to the extent that there is an opportunity to support them, I think that we as a council should be doing that. And I will not be here on the 24th, so I wanted to just impress upon council that, you know, this is what we want. When folks, you know, they pay their debt to society, they need to get, they need to get, you know, get a chance. And so the quickest way to go back is to not get a chance and not, not have a helping hand. And so to deny the transient permits to these two people, I think, you know, would not be a good thing for the city and definitely not be a good thing for them and their families. And so I just ask that as we look at that on the 24th, because I won't be here, that we think about that and think about, you know, that we want to make sure that we give folks a second chance. Now, if they mess it up, then yeah, take their permit or whatever, but I don't think we off the bat say no and put up a roadblock. I don't think that's what we want to do as a society. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Just to add on to that, Councilmember Spitzley, I think that's part of the process of why, after there is a denial, there is the ability to come to council to look at things. Thank you.
Okay, we are to remarks by the mayor or executive assistant.
Rossat, thank you.
Thank you.
And public comment on city government-related matters. Folks have up to three minutes to address the council. The first speaker is Tony Ruskus, followed by Jody Washington.
I just have a concern about the Apolosa Bar across the street from where I live. I'm an owner resident on South Washington Square. And when it first opened, it was like, when it was cold out, it was nice. You could hear the windows and everything rocking, but it was okay. Now it's gotten nicer, they're getting louder and louder, and they have to come out onto the street. The speakers are outside, and this is till 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. So I believe there might be some laws about that. But it's escalating, they have fights there, and just last week we had a shooting. So I know they, you know, they didn't okay the fights or the shooting, but they are feeding the beast by just having the music louder and louder. And I'd like to know if there's anything that can be done about it.
Could you give us the name of the bar again?
Apolosa. It's at 221 South Washington Square.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there any way I'll know if anything's going to be done about this, or?
We've got your sign in with that, so we'll follow back up with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Jody Washington, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you, Jody Washington. Patricia, thank you. I couldn't have said it better myself. So I hope that you all listen to what she has to say, because we absolutely have to give folks a second chance. And when they've done their time, they've done their time. And, you know, what they said, I know all of it is true, and so thank you for what you said, and I hope the rest of you will listen too. I actually came to talk about the parks. I was on Fox 47 after the woman complained regarding the encampment on the River Trail, and I was asked to speak because of my homeless advocacy that I do. And what I said to the fellow was, I think maybe, excuse me, we could look at a city-sanctioned camp. I did not say we should put camps in our parks. I did not say that we should be putting camps on private property. In fact, the entire reason I suggested city-sanctioned encampment was to keep folks out of our parks and off private property, not to mention it's best for them because we know where they are and we can get services to them. So I was highly offended when I saw Brett Kaczynski on Fox 47 stating all the problems that there would be if we put camps in the city parks as I had suggested. I never have suggested we put camps in parks. I never will suggest that we put camps in parks. I have residents questioning me, thinking that I, because the mayor and the parks director think I sanctioned having parks be encampments, couldn't be further from the truth. I, you know, people will twist things for their own personal political agenda, and I don't appreciate being part of the game, and I want it stopped immediately. Do not misquote me. Do not do a false narrative, and do not put words in my mouth that have not been there. I don't want the Andy Shore, let me stack the council leadership fund, to be used to put out, to put out mailings about me wanting encampments. Hasn't happened yet, but you never know. I don't want Advanced Greater Lansing being funded by the Andy Shore, let me stack the council leadership fund to show I'm not a good citizen. I resent this. I'm staying in my lane. I'm playing a fair and clean campaign, and I want people to stay in their own lane and to stop putting false words in my mouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Yangerson.
So I am right here to speak directly about, because Ms. Wood actually brought this up earlier, it was Andy Shore's inappropriate use of emails to fund his favorite candidates for city council. It is, I absolutely agree, it was very inappropriate of him to do that, and I just feel that this, that he absolutely needs to be held accountable for this, and he should consider resignation as an option. In fact, I think he definitely needs to resign because this is just unacceptable. And while there's nothing wrong with endorsing candidates for council, there is something wrong with using the city logo inappropriately in his emails and emailing city workers over it as well. That is just wrong on so many levels, and it needs to be, and he needs to be held accountable for that. And adding on to that, it, absolutely, seeing that a lot of candidates like me get treated pretty badly by the media, as long as like, we're not endorsed by the mayor, like what Jody said about the whole getting misquoted over homeless encampments on whatever. I've certainly been mistreated by the media as well. I mean, the city poll said some things about me not being able to campaign without a car, which I can get around the city fine with a cat bus, and that's also kind of insulting to low-income people who have to use the cat bus and can't afford their own car. So it just, I feel that's just very insulting to other, to many candidates running for city council. And I do think that if you're going to call out any candidates, you also have to call out other candidates who are actually sort of participating corrupt, like Missy Liljai. I mean, I don't mean anything against her, but her getting the endorsement of Andy Shore and considering what Andy Shore's doing, the emails inappropriately, it makes, it just, in case, if she makes the general, which is kind of 50/50 on whether or not she makes the general or not, considering what the people have to say, she needs to make a statement about that as well, saying, yeah, like rejecting an endorsement from someone who's using emails very inappropriately. Again, I don't want anyone harass her about it, I just need to make this clear. And Andy Shore needs to be held accountable for those whole emails things, and many in the media need to be accountable if they misrepresent candidates' quotes and whatever candidates have to do to get around the city. That's all I need to say right now, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I believe it says Yangerson, followed by Mike Lynn.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Mandela Washington Fellowship, I would want to thank you for hosting us as young leaders from Africa, getting an opportunity to learn how we conduct your business in terms of governance. We are really grateful. My question is, as we move around doing community service here in the greater city of East Lansing, I met a lot of folks who were complaining about unaffordability of accommodation or houses. So I would want to know what is the city's policy in terms of balancing the relationship between the landlords and also tenants? To say, if there are policies that are already there that protects tenants, how best can they be strengthened that also those who are vulnerable, the less privileged one, cannot be found being homeless? And also, I met some folks who are pensioners who are saying they do not have policies that protect them after they retire. So I also want to know if there are policies that protects people who are no longer able to work, to say how they can best be taken care of when they retire, when they no longer have the power to work? Thank you very much, on behalf of Mandela Washington Fellowship. My name is Yangason Matete, I'm from Zimbabwe.
Thank you, sir. And this is the opportunity that we give the audience to speak at the dais. One of the council members might come down after the council meeting and address your questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Lynn, followed by David Ellis.
I think we pretty well outlined what the ethics complaint is, and that one's specific, and there's more coming. But with everybody and every, I guess everybody that spoke on this up to this point, we're just looking for accountability. I just really don't understand how one person gets this much grace. I just don't. I mean, to the level of, you know, how much corruption goes on and having a whole city attorney's office to defend it is beyond me, and really the only stopgap we have is you all. So they asked for you all to sign on to this complaint. If you feel there's things in there that need to change, speak on it. Tell us what you guys think. I don't think you guys were given that same affordability when it was written on Jeffrey Brown, and I thought that was a travesty, I thought that was a hit job. I think the city attorney used, used, oh, I think the mayor used the city attorney's office to write that, and here we are, having to send it through the same city attorney, or the conversation came from him about whether or not this is liable or not. It just really blows my mind. So I would also ask that the city attorney not have anything to do with this ethics complaint whatsoever. I also would like to see this council, at some point in time or another, you know, we had a lot of questions about like, the police oversight committee and it's going through the commission and the police commission, and why would we have to have a new one? I mean, plain and simple, because everybody that's commissioned or that's appointed by this mayor, we can't trust. Period. They can be the best human beings in the world, but if they're there because the mayor put them there, I can't trust them. And that's just facts. So that's why we don't trust it. And if you guys want a police oversight commission, just the same way East Lansing does, then you all appoint it. You know, there's so many things that have happened in this city over the last five years since he's been mayor. There's so many ethics violations, but none of it gets reported, nobody will come forward. So I mean, just like, all of the lawsuits that come forward, all of those would be ethics violations. These are constitutional rights that have been violated. Plain and simple. I was a victim of that. That's a constitutional rights, and all the individuals who are named in that have, who have done something, were city employees. Those are all ethics violations. Who's going to investigate? Who's going to look into it? Who's going to figure out some accountability for these people who keep wasting our money through lawsuits and everything else that goes on? So these people have no accountability to the money that has to go out to defend these situations or pay out when people are found guilty. They're just employees. The only way that you control their behavior is through ethics or discipline, which comes down from the mayor, right? So there's nobody going to give this discipline out. So that's why I ask that you all really take a look at this ethics violation. We really don't have a whole lot of time to run this. There's people that are beating doors right now, the best they can, in order to have a civil and, you know, an equal and equitable election, and there's somebody here trying to stack the deck, and you all know it to be true. And that's just crazy to me, that that's being allowed to be done. Even so much that President Wood had to speak on city emails being used. Like, he has everybody's email list in the whole city and can send that out. How many people got it? Did he use company time to do that? So thank you all for looking into that, and I look forward to hearing something real soon about that.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis, followed by Farhan Chekhovmar.
David Ellis, Downtown Lansing. I'm actually jumping off of what the gentleman from Zimbabwe had said, talking about housing prices in the city, housing and rental. and rentals specifically. I, attending LCC, I've actually gone to one of my previous professors, who is an economist, and talked to him about it, and he has said the same thing. I've been seeing over and over again on the news, online. Right now, housing prices and rents are going up in cities all across the United States because we are still in housing crisis, is what they're calling it. We are desperately needing more housing. This is why we're seeing all these huge high rises going up everywhere, and all these giant housing projects. Rent in the city is getting out of control. It has been for years. My little brother just had to move out of an apartment downtown because he showed on paper his rent is going from 1,250 to 1,500. 1,250 was too high. This is a single-bedroom apartment for 1,250 at the 600-lot apartments above the Meyer downtown. So rent downtown is absurd. And now, when you're looking at the zoning code for Lansing, within the city of Lansing, apartment buildings are like multifamily apartments in the city. It is only 29.9%. Not even 30% of the city allows these buildings. When you're looking at like mixed-use buildings, it is down to 6.9% of city land available. Meanwhile, we have single-family homes, which in residential, if we're looking at, in the entire city, they are, 65.9% of the city is exclusively zoned for single-family. Once we get to residential, it is 80.2%. You are only allowed to have a house with one unit in it. Friends of mine are having to rent houses designed for large family units as just two people living here, because there are just no apartments available. Most of the places they looked at are at capacity. My apartment, which is Ferris Park Apartments, took me a second, is at capacity with over 100 units. That's a nine-floor building. I'm not asking for giant mid- and high-rise buildings in every single neighborhood, but when we have zoning options such as, I think it was R6B, where it requires multifamily housing to be in the style of the neighborhood, you can have single-family homes converted to duplexes that will still blend in perfectly with the houses around them, but it just brings that density and brings these families options in so much of the city where it's not allowed. It opens up houses for people who need the single family. It opens up units for people who don't need the single family. And it's just, we need to start looking into great reforms into our zoning code. This should be one of our highest priorities.
Thank you. Next is Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Erica Lynn.
Good evening, Farhan Sheikh Omar. First and foremost, greetings to my African brothers and sisters. Good seeing you guys. Second, I want to talk about the two gentlemen who have some records. Since when did we start giving out the death penalty in this city? Since when? Just because you have felonies on your record does not mean you receive the death penalty. Just because you have some petty misdemeanors in this city does not mean that you receive the death penalty. Instead of creating holes around people who have done their time, who have served, instead of creating holes where they can fall in again and go back into the system, why don't you guys create doors so they can go into those opportunities and help and contribute to society? That is the kind of city that we want to live in and we love, not a city that rejects people just because of their past record. We have people who are working hard to try to change. You know how hard that is? To serve 10 years in prison, come out, you can't get a house, you can't get a job, and so you think outside the box, and you try to create your own business, and you can't even get a license for that? What are they supposed to do? No, seriously, what are they supposed to do? What are these people supposed to do? Rob? Kill? Is that what you guys want? Come on, we gotta do better than that. Also, Andy Shore and his trust fund or leadership fund, whatever he created, I think, I don't have his number, but if I did, I would save him as scam likely, because Andy Shore is a scammer. Like, literally, he's a scammer. And when he first released the first newsletter that he sent to everybody, he didn't include the people that he was gonna give this money to. But finally, he released some names, and it's gonna go to Missy. And so, that's why he's not here tonight, 'cause he's busy knocking doors for Missy, which is a joke, because she's not gonna win. She's not. I already know she's not gonna win. And so, Andy, we're not paying you $130,000 a year for you to knock doors for Missy. She has two feet. Gotta give her a mouth. She got two hands, just like everybody else, just like me. I gotta knock doors. I had to stop and come here so I can speak and represent the community. Jody is here. Nick Zandi is here. We could all be knocking doors. But no, we chose to be here. We're not getting paid. So, we're not looking for substitutions. We don't want a deputy mayor here, all right? We want the man that we voted for. Well, I didn't vote for him, but the man that this city voted for, and that gets paid $130,000, that's the man we want showing up to city council meetings, not his subs. Smarke, you gonna start doing your job, man? I'll see you in the next meeting.
This is time to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Linda Athlone.
Hello. I'd like to start off really quick by just reading a few excerpts, because I think it needs to lay the foundation for those maybe listening that don't have the full context. If you don't have the full context of the letter in question, it is on America 20 Life's Facebook page. We will reshare that tonight so that the letter is out there and people understand the severity of the issue at hand. Just a couple of excerpts so that I can go into why it's such an issue. "I am serving as mayor now because of you and others like you who have supported my vision for our capital city. I'm turning to you again to ask for your help to continue my vision into the future. As we implement our vision of growth, we need partners that will help. Please contribute to my leadership fund so I can make sure that we have the right partners growing our city. I am working to help elect a new generation of leaders to our city council." I, 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 me, me, me. That is an issue, and I want to point out that it's not lost on me that this piece of paper was sitting out front. When I walked in the door, wow, that's some transparency for you. First time I've ever seen something like that, and it's because it's in defense of the city to say, 'we investigated ourselves and found no wrongdoing.' This tells us that there are always legal loopholes. There's always loopholes when it comes to campaign finance. This we already know. If you will notice in my ethics complaint, I did not cite campaign finance. The integrity of campaign finance is sketchy at best. I understand that. You can take money, you can spend money. But what you can't do is you cannot solicitations, send solicitations, you cannot solicit funds as an elected official and as a city employee for personal benefit and personal gain. That is what this was. It's also not lost on me that in this, it cites that the logo, not similar at all. It's not the same. It's funny that the letter that came out today has a new logo. It's funny that the verbiage changed to a little bit more of "we" and "shared." So if there was nothing wrong with that initial letter, why change it? That in itself supports the fact that there needs to be investigation opened into that initial letter. Again, I will state, taking out the loopholes just because something is not illegal, just because we can't find a direct correlation to something in violation, doesn't mean that the behavior should be permitted. A mayor that uses their personal position, their title, for personal benefit is wrong, and is a threat to the very fabric of our democracy. I cannot overstate how important it is that every aspect of what transpired, and even things that I may not have noted or missed, are investigated, to the full extent that you've investigated other extremely unfounded rumor-milled, fueled complaints against members of this body. So I'm asking you all, we're simply asking that elected officials and city employees act with integrity. So it is your job, it is your duty, to again, not allow corruption to flourish here in Lansing and not set a dangerous precedent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Athlone, followed by Christian Awambu.
Hello. I'm here today to speak on at least three different items. One, taxes. The failure of the city to accept the postage date as being timely for paying a taxes is not acceptable, nor has it ever been. This is contrary to what the state of Michigan and the federal government do. Postage dates are acceptable as being timely submission for the purposes of paying taxes by both of those entities. My second issue involves bicycle parking. The city needs to have a new provision requiring businesses to have a place for parking bicycles. Frequently, children are forced to leave bicycles outside of a business. This subjects them to the possibility of being stolen. Further, in terms of actually using one's bike for transportation, if you don't have someplace to park it, then you aren't going to be able to go into a store, i.e. to purchase something and come out and get on your bike. And I would remind you that bikes are very expensive. The third issue involves distribution of gun locks. Gun locks can be obtained for free, yet the city of Lansing does not participate in this project. When I sought gun locks for distribution, I had to use the state police, who are kind enough to provide gun locks, and also Officer Bush, who answered questions about the new legislation regarding guns. It would appear that our city is incapable of doing this. I fail to see why. The answers should be there. People should not have to go to the state police to obtain gun locks. They should be able to obtain them here in terms of the city of Lansing. Also, it's my understanding when someone files for a concealed weapons permit, they should be given a gun lock at that point in time by the city. We need to do everything we can to reduce the use of guns. Gun locks are not gonna stop some nut from coming in with AK-15 or 47, but they can stop that person who might decide they want to get a gun and kill themselves, or some child out there who can get hold of a gun, not really know what it is, and wind up shooting somebody innocently. This needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Awambu has left, so...
No.
Oh, he is. Okay, great. Christian Awambu?
I'm very grateful for you all for your contribution in the city of Lansing. My name is Christian Awambu. So I have a great pressing need that I wrote regarding the property taxes. We have a series of properties that have been brought to code, and a lot of payments have been made, but there were pink tags that were put in. And I received a lot of call from the tenants. So I was pleading if some time could be given to me so that they would be paid. We've made a lot of payment. For instance, the West Hodge, between the month of February and April, we paid almost $11,000, but we're behind with $2,022, and I'm making the arrangements so that it will be paid. It had been brought to code. The same thing, there are about three, four properties that are brought to code. So I'm pleading if it could be looked into, at least if some time could be given to me, I'm making arrangements to say one of the properties so that we'll be able to pay that off. Because if retard is put in, it affects the tenants. They'll be forced to move out, and also affect the payment that will be coming in. So I'm pleading if it could be looked into. We're making every effort. It will affect the tenant. It will affect us. And it also affects the city, the income that will be coming in. A lot of other property tenants, because of, for now that I'm talking about, we have a list of people, a waiting list, that are waiting once the property is brought to code so that it can be rented out. There are plenty of them. So this will help me. It will help the city. It will help the community. So I'm pleading if it could be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I returned your email.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I indicated that we had referred this over to the city attorney's office, and that council doesn't have the ability to waive ordinances. So this is part of an ordinance, and so we'll have the city attorney look at that and then report back.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if I can acknowledge one written, additional written communication from Mitch Rice regarding the show cause hearings, we made part of the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
Sure. So this is specifically pertaining to the ethics complaint against Mayor Andy Shore. We were in receipt of an email that included the complaint at about 3:40 this afternoon. My understanding is that we were going to look at referring this on July 24th to Committee of the Whole, which establishes the timeline of the earliest potential voting by this body would be August 14th, in that this does impact in some way the election on August 8th. I think it is appropriate so that we can have a fair, balanced conversation and in a transparent way that we actually refer this tonight so that we can take up on the 24th as part of Committee of the Whole. So with that being said, I'm going to move to suspend Council Rule Number Nine to allow for the consideration of a late referral. Thank you.
We have a request to suspend Council Rule Number Nine for referral. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. The communication that we received will be referred to the Ethics Board. Pardon?
Sorry. My understanding is that we would also take this up as part of Committee of the Whole on the 24th.
Yes.
That was the whole. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. And I was just, you know, since it's coming up, where it says that in the conclusion from the city attorney, he is permitted to campaign and raise funds for others or ballot questions, and he is not allowed to use city resources. I just wonder how email fits in that. I just remember a past commissioner who had a similar thing, and it was a big deal.
The email I received did not come from a city email. It came from Heather@Andy, and it might have been andyshore.com, but it was not from a city email. It came to, and the commissioner that was involved sent it from their commissioner email address.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.